This is the pledge, sir.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for the students that have passed away at Santa Fe High School and their families. Thank you.
So I want to cover three topics tonight. Hopefully I have time to hit them all. First, discount council discussed, voted on, and approved a budget this year that got sent to the Board of Finance for final review. The municipal side of the budget went almost entirely untouched by the Board of Finance, but was sent to a referendum in which the voting members of this town further approved the municipal side of the budget. From what I can tell, this body approved what is essentially the same municipal budget we, the voting demographic, approved as well. You seem okay with it, we seem okay with it. I don’t see any need to spend even one breath discussing the municipal side of the budget if nothing else but for the sake of concision. I implore you to not waste anyone’s time with the municipal side of the budget and instead to move on and do the hard thing that we all need to be done. Second, I advise the council to take all opinions you hear tonight, including my own, with a lot more than a grain of salt for two reasons. One, the sample that will be presented to you tonight suffers from what is called self-reporting bias. This means the sample is tainted by the fact that it is not randomly selected and therefore can be said to inherently not represent, be representative of the opinion of the whole of the population. I’m short on time, so if you have any questions about self-reporting biases, I recommend asking your fellow councilmen, of whom I am certain at least a few have taken enough statistics courses to understand the effects of self-reporting biases. Two, the sample size you hear tonight is certainly going to be so small as to be considered entirely anecdotal and thus not representative of the opinion of the whole population, especially when compared to the thousands of votes that were cast in the last referendum and is the reason we are meeting here tonight in the first place. The third and final topic I want to discuss is voter turnout. I took the time to gather and compile the results of the last eighteen budget referenda from vital statistics in the Clerk’s Office in a worksheet I would hope to have entered into the record if for no other reason than as a reference for future concerns in regards there too. If I may?
Yes.
It is my understanding that at least some members of the electorate are concerned that the most recent referendum lacked a proper voter turnout as a result of last week’s storm. Considering the timing and brief length of the storm, I find that difficult to believe, especially when compared to the data regarding this year’s voter turnout. In brief, at seventeen point nine three percent, no referendum has had a higher relative voter turnout since the second referendum in 2010, and since 2004, only three first-attempt referenda have had higher turnouts. One was 2004 itself, a year in which we were just one year removed from the extremely highly contentious 2003 budget referendum, which only narrowly passed on a third attempt in August of that year. Another was 2006, whose twenty-five point five percent voter turnout is so outside of the norm as to be considered anomalous, especially when that was a year in which the PTO and BOE made by far the most concerted active effort to drive voters to the polls, going so far as to make signs specific to this effort and to distribute VOTE t-shirts, standing for Voice Our Right to Educate. We have certainly not seen nearly so concerted an effort from any source since, and it should be noted, they should absolutely be commended for their efforts twelve years ago. It should be noted that every referendum with higher turnouts than this year since 2004 predates 2011, and the trend since has been far lower voter turnouts. I do not know what happened in 2011, but there is a stark contrast in voter turnout starting then, which is so abrupt compared to previous years as to indicate a trend bifurcation. This is why I have broken down mean voter turnouts into since 2011 and since 2004. In fact, this year is a full one point three six standard deviations above the mean since 2011. In terms we might all understand, this year’s seventeen point nine three percent voter turnout would put us in the ninety-second percentile of all possible results following the trend. There is a lot more we might glean from the data I have presented in this handout, copies of which I am happy to leave here at this podium, but the thing I’m hoping is impressed upon the bodies that claims that turnout for this year deviating in any way from the norm in a negative light are not in any way remotely supported by the data, and I find it difficult to believe that last week’s storm had any meaningful enough effect on the turnout as to declare the results no longer representative of the population. To put this plainly, the BOE budget failed to pass by one hundred and forty-nine votes.
Mike Sinello, please.
Sure. In years in which the BOE budget passed, it did so with a mean relative margin of twelve point eight seven percent. What that means is that if every voter was, who was genuinely precluded from voting because of the storm, voted in a manner that was a reflection of the mean margin in passing years, it would require another one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight votes for a relative turnout of twenty-five point one percent, which would be the second highest turnout of the last eighteen budget referenda, before which I have no data, and only surpassed by the 2006 referendum I previously mentioned, and only by a narrow margin. Data and sound, logic-driven decision-making is all I ask, and I don’t think that’s unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Walter O’Conner, please.
Walter O’Conner, Three Courtland Drive. As the Councilman, now the Chairman of the Finance Board, and not speaking in that capacity tonight, just as a plain lecturer. One comment I want to make for sure is, the storm on Tuesday’s vote on the referendum, there’s only one thing we can say for sure, it affected turnout. But we have no way of knowing, anybody, what the outcome would have been if that storm wasn’t there. There are some distinct trends that were there. The advisory votes were overwhelmingly in one direction, and I wish the council would heed those, that trend. Also, the town budget passed, as presented in that budget, and I wish tonight’s meeting does not change that and just present it back to the voters as it was. With regard to turnout and to follow up on my point, we had eighty percent of the electors in this town did not vote. There’s got to be something that we could do as a body to improve turnout. And I have lived in other towns here in Connecticut, and sometimes their tax referendums were done on a Saturday. I would look to, and it always increased voter turnout. I would like to see the council take a look at that and if logistically feasible to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Leerson, please.
Thank you. I’m Julie Leerson at 124 Grapebrook Road in New Milford. So yeah, we had about eighteen percent turnout, that’s pretty good for a budget referendum. I’ve seen worse numbers, but it’s still not what it was on track to be, which I expect is going to be above twenty percent, because there is a statistically significant block of voters who vote after work. The hours between five to eight PM are often quite crowded at the polling stations. The storm struck slightly before five PM. I know it was before five because I was sitting on Bank Street waiting for my kid to come out from an activity, and I was wondering if I had to go in and get her, or if she could run out to the car, or if it was going to be safe to do so. I know that the power went out at New Milford High School and Hill and Plain by five-thirty. I know that because my other kid was supposed to be in a chorus concert that evening at New Milford High School, and I was getting texts from parents saying the concert was canceled, the chorus teacher was stuck at the high school, and there was no power. I know that the mayor issued a be careful statement before six PM urging people to use caution going out and about after the storm had blown through, and to take special care of our first responders who were dealing with downed trees and other emergencies. And I know that the polls closed at eight PM, and we declared a state of emergency around ten PM that evening, if my memory serves me correctly. So it doesn’t really matter how long the polls were open, if you planned to vote after five PM, you couldn’t be there or couldn’t get there. I know people whose driveways were blocked by fallen trees. I know people who were sitting on Route eighty-four, or Super Seven, or Candlewood Lake Road, north or south, and couldn’t get there because they were blocked by trees. Or I know people who, you know, were worried about family members and felt that the emergency took precedence over getting to the polls that may or may not have been opened because they didn’t know, because they did hear that the power was out. Now, that’s not going to anybody here, and I first want to say what a wonderful job all of our first responders did in responding to the storm, so thank you all for that. But we know that the commute home from Danbury and Brookfield in southern New Milford was completely nuts, and we know that people were trapped on these roads. So as you all consider what you need to do about the budget, please do not mistake Tuesday’s numbers for a mandate. You did not hear from all the voters. We like to talk about the will of the people in capital letters, but we need to remember that some voices were literally drowned out by the wind on Tuesday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie. Jeffrey, please.
Jeffrey Edrinkin, Six Glenbrook Drive. I just want to say that the way this town came together after the disastrous weather event of last Tuesday evening was truly phenomenal. Thank you to the first responders, the work crews, the linemen, and everyone who spent days and nights cleaning up and repairing and restoring power and everything needed to get this area up and running again. I don’t want to be redundant to what she said basically, but I just want to state for the record that there were many people who were forced to choose between their personal safety and voting. I’m just, that they were not able to vote on Tuesday. It’s nothing to do with the outcome of the vote per se, just that, the point is that after the tornado warning was issued to well-pass when the polls closed at eight PM, people were stuck in their homes, stuck at work in other towns, in hours-long traffic on a commute that would usually take minutes, and to ignore their struggles is unfair. No one expected this storm to be as disastrous as it was. There were plenty of people whose voices were not heard in the vote. Still, silver lining, how amazing is it that we got this one point three, I was actually just informed of one point five million dollars funding back to the town? This is wonderful news, and it must feel like a burden lifted from the shoulders of Town Council to have a bit more money to work with. I would like to state for the record that I feel you have a responsibility, a duty even, to use at least a portion of these dollars for the BOE and the school budget. At least the five hundred thousand the BOF voted to put in, if not more. There is now, in my opinion, no excuse to keep the education budget flat now that we have these new funds to work with. I want to say it is imperative that the town be informed of these funds. I’ll do my part in getting the word out, as it is all of our responsibilities to make sure everyone is educated on how things have changed now since the day of the vote. I feel like thanks to these new funds, it’s a whole new ballgame, and this isn’t like Yankees versus Red Sox. We’re all on the same team, and I think with these new funds, we can all win. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Bird, please.
Good evening. I’m speaking with regards to issues relating to the May fifteenth referendum vote, and specifically to the issue of how do we move forward from here. We are fortunate that another option has arisen, making the exact revote unnecessary. Connecticut will be reinstating now one point five million to our town for the 2019 fiscal year, four hundred thousand of that in pilot funds, and one point one million in what they have titled “education cost-sharing funds.” Now, I personally would like to see that full amount going back to education, however, to appease those that did not want to take more from savings, I’d like to suggest a compromise. With the addition of these funds, this Town Council is now able to reduce the amount being taken from the contingency fund by seven hundred thousand dollars or more, and that is the amount that the Board of Finance had placed, or had taken away from the fund. So that would even out to exactly the amount that this Board already approved to be removed from that fund. And still allow you to maintain the five hundred thousand dollars or more now that the Board of Finance put back into the education budget, specifically at the request of an overwhelming number of voters who turned out to the public budget hearings, to request that exact thing. This compromise provides a way to satisfy both our yes and no voters in this town by keeping some of the requested funds in the education budget, which allows the Board of Education to make less the catastrophic changes to programming that would need to take place. Though it does not eliminate it, unfortunately, if you leave it at the five hundred thousand, our Board of Ed still needs to reduce their line items by over nine hundred thousand dollars. So our kids are still going to get hit and get hit hard, even leaving the five hundred thousand dollars in. But by reducing the amount from savings, it also acknowledges the desires of the no voters, and it does allow you to say to them, “We were hearing you, and we did reduce that amount.” I, for one, am a reasonable person, and I understand that to make progress, you must make compromise. And I hope that I find that our Town Council members prove themselves to be reasonable as well. If not, and further reductions are made to the education budget, I personally will be voting no for both budgets and yes to both advisory questions about increasing the budgets, and I will be urging others to do the same. I don’t want to do that. I understand that failed referendums cost this town money every time they have to put out a new referendum. I do not want to see that happen. However, I feel I would have no option, as the budget stands now with over nine hundred thousand dollars more to be removed by the Board of Ed. It will directly negatively impact our students’ quality of education, and that is simply unacceptable. We have a large group of support of education in this town, and we will all be paying close attention to the voting records of every elected official. And it will be noticed which council members and board members are willing to work for a quality education in this town and those who are not. It is time for New Milford to stop slashing the education budget and to act upon the understanding that our children are our future, and that the way to make all of our futures, not just their future, better and more prosperous, is to start with a quality education for the upcoming generations. Thank you. I also have nine letters of people who were not able to attend tonight that they wanted read into the minutes. I did not put their names individually down on the sheet, but if I can, I’d like to do that at the end. I’d like them read into the, read into the record, please.
Walter?
Jackie Eaton?
Hi, everyone. Jackie Eaton, Six Redwood Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Wait, glasses. So, we bought our house sixteen years ago. We moved from Fairfield County. We almost didn’t move to New Milford because everybody we knew was saying the schools were not that great. So, we did anyway, and we were happy. We loved the water and the lake and the rivers, and we love it here. And over the years, the schools got better, and every year it seemed like there was always this big war over the BOE budget, and every time we voted for more money for education. Because education is why people move here, it’s why businesses move here. A thriving town has great schools with small class sizes and services for all the kids. A mediocre school system is not acceptable. We will never be a great town if we don’t have great schools. My kids are out of school, so I mean, I should not even care anymore, but I do care because this is my town. All right. So, let’s get our terminology straight. We have a surplus. So the signs around town with savings was a manipulative and misleading propaganda. We have a surplus. In fact, we have a surplus surplus. We have so much of a surplus that we’re losing state funds apparently, because, hey, New Milford has so much money, let’s cut some funding. Okay? So that’s bizarre to me. So, and it also leads me to believe with this surplus surplus, because we have enough surplus to keep our bond rating apparently, and we could have done the school budget that they tried to keep flat, but they can’t have no control over health care and more special-needs kids, et cetera, et cetera. They tried to keep it flat, but there were rising costs, but that’s a different story. So, now that we have a surplus surplus, and now I’m just learning we have one point bazillion million dollars more of a surplus, so now we have a triple surplus. Okay? So, I’m being taxed, you know, all the time, and just this money is going into coffers, and our education budget every single year gets like, everyone’s up in arms, and it’s too much money, blah, 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 but there’s nothing more important. So, my other point is that our Finance Board almost unanimously voted to use the surplus. So this is our Finance Board, right? So, to me, this doesn’t even make sense, so something doesn’t jive here. So what happened? I’d like to know who was behind these signs, these mistruths, and how are they allowed to put up mistruths all over town? Could I have gotten a permit to put up a sign that said like, you know, selfish town leaders want you to vote no? Would that, could I put up those signs? So, I’m just kind of wondering who, how does this, these mistruths get spread around town and get people to go out to vote? I think that those signs had a lot to do with this big turnout. Because, you know, if you say to somebody this inflammatory thing that we’re going to use our savings, the average person doesn’t know. I mean, I spent, you know, I’m finally at an age when I can actually be more involved in town. I was kind of a slacker for the past fifteen years, you know, I was kind of busy. But now I can, I can pay attention, but the average person can’t. So when they see signs saying that they’re using our savings, you know, people get scared. They don’t know what that means. And I feel like it was a lie, and I feel like somebody was behind spreading this big lie around town. And the average citizen doesn’t understand, this stuff is complicated. You know, it’s super complicated. I would have to, you all have to do this, I got to commend you all for doing this because it’s like a full-time job to keep up on this stuff. So, anyway, I was really taken aback. The storm, you know, most-
You have to have a minute, please.
Most Democrats voted night, I think that’s known, most young people voted night. The old folks tend to be able to go and vote in the day. We voted in the dark at Hill and Plain, and only because it’s right near our house, but then we had to walk home because, you know, it was a disaster zone. But I just want to say that I feel like I’ve been duped a little bit, and I feel like if we don’t support our schools, then, then what do we have left? Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Tammy?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tammy McInerney. I reside at thirty-three Sterling Drive, and I am the Vice Chair in New Milford Board of Education. I’m here to speak on behalf of the Board to address the task you have in setting a second referendum date and amount this evening. The Board has been working collaboratively with the town for the past six months to close the gap in this year’s school-town budget, or this year’s town budget. We are happy to have been able to achieve this goal and are grateful for the good working relationship we have with the town. As everyone here no doubt knows, the education budget at last week’s referendum failed by only one hundred and forty-nine votes. The margin was very close considering the weather challenges that many in our town face at afternoon and evening, and many residents are frustrated that they couldn’t get out to vote. Nevertheless, here we are, so what do we do now? The Board of Education appreciates the task the Town Council had in addressing the cuts from hard curve in establishing next year’s budget. That being said, since the last Town Council meeting on the budget, things have most certainly changed. Originally, the two main cuts came in the form of reductions to the education cost-sharing, our ECS grant, and the pilot grant. Since last week’s referendum, the state has signed into law a new budget for next year restoring one point five million dollars in funding to our town of New Milford. That breaks down to one point one million more that was budgeted for ECS funding and additional four hundred thousand dollars in the pilot grant. In light of these changes, we would like to continue our collaboration with the town and work together to solve the issues facing the community and set forth a budget that voters can rally behind and approve. With the restored state funds, we believe that keeping the cuts to the education budget at the level of the May fifteenth referendum will produce a budget that is fiscally responsible, provide the necessary services required to maintain the quality of our schools, and reduce the financial burden on the taxpayers of our town. Should the Town Council keep the reductions as said at the last referendum, the Board of Education is still faced with more than nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cuts. This will be an arduous task and will most likely include cuts to programs and staff. We urge you not to cut any deeper, and we, again, extend an invitation to each one of you to visit our schools and see firsthand the resources the budget provides to our students, our schools, and our community. We thank you for your consideration and continued partnerships in educating the children of New Milford.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Jeff Winter, please.
Good evening. Jeff Winter, Twenty-two Maury Road. First, I just, as a point of information, because it’s very easy to just throw around one point five, one point one, where, can I ask the Finance Director what the, if you know what the actual return is to the town in terms of the school or, and the town-
We’ll talk after poll participation. You can answer.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. The pilot grant, if I could just ask you a question.
Four seventeen, eight hundred and eighty.
Four seventeen, okay. Well, actually, the town has another grant that’s kind of been ignored, that is actually larger than that, that was reduced this year, and people said that that was a direct reduction to education. Well, actually, that grant had to do with the building of the new high school. We had been receiving monies for twenty years from the state of Connecticut for building New Milford High School. Now, as we have reduced that debt over time, the state also reduces its debt. Well, that twenty years is just about over, and from last year, when we received five hundred and fifty-eight thousand and change, this year we’re receiving sixty-eight thousand dollars and change. And people in this room have directly said that that’s a cut to the schools and school funding, and it even is essentially under the Board of Ed right here. Well, guess what, folks? We built that school. This has been a known fact to anyone who understands finance in this town, so this is not a cut to education. Our bonds are also dropping, and that’s exactly what this is for. This is not to fund education or teachers, this is to reduce our bonds. So, if you really want to look at it, the amount of money that will be paid off this year in debt service just for the schools in 2019 is one million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. We will never have to pay that again for the high school. So if you think that four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars is something that we can’t live with in the future, you’re dead wrong, because that debt is gone. Okay? Debt running out next year for the schools, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You put those two together, that’s one point eight million dollars that over the next two years, this town and the taxpayers no longer have to pay. But our burden has been reduced, and it has been falsely said, falsely said, that the schools are down two point three million dollars in funding. And of course, we now know that that’s far different because of the change in the ECS grant. Now, also, town debt that will be paid off this year, and this includes interest, is one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Town debt that will be ending next year, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine. The total amount to taxpayers in this town this year will be, that will no longer have to be paid, is a million five plus. It’s a lot of money. And again, that’s not going to be the burden next year. And in 2020, it’s going to be down by five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So when people say, “Well, you know, we’ve got to look out for savings in the future, we’ve got to look out for the debt,” uh-uh, uh-uh. That’s essentially two million dollars gone. And most of that, again, was to pay for the high school. And anyone, and we know that there are people in this room that have said that they lost to school funding is two point three million dollars, it is absolutely false. You have to essentially take out five hundred thousand dollars of money that had previously been paid by the state of Connecticut in their help for us to build that high school. That twenty-year obligation is coming to an end. Now, granted, we will still have debt to pay for these schools, and why is that? Because it was refinanced. It was refinanced by our previous Finance Director.
Jeff, grab a minute, please.
Thank you. He did it, and I’m not saying it’s wrong, he did it to get better rates, and that’s okay. There’s nothing wrong with that. But understand that the state has been giving significant financial help to New Milford to build that high school since nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, and other years. That’s very important to understand, and that is going away. We will not have to pay that. Lastly, I think Walter O’Conner made a very nice statement before in terms of getting people to come out to vote and thinking about what is the best way to do that. Well, I have a suggestion as well, which was said by a friend of mine, and that is for public officials to take a stand. It’s as silent now in this room as it was during the time of referendum. None of you took a public stand in support or against this budget. But if you believe in what you do, and if you believed in the mayor’s budget, because the budget he put out there and the tax increase he put out there was exactly the same as the Board of Finance, and none of you had the courage to say yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Wendy, please.
Hi, I’m Poppy Strachan, Joyce as well. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for all of your service to our town. It’s very much appreciated. My name is Wendy Fallenback. I live at seventy-six Bonnie D Lane. I’ll hand out some other-
Lastly, I think Walter O'Connor made a very nice statement before in terms of getting people to come out to vote and thinking about what is the best way to do that. Well, I have a suggestion as well, which was said by a friend of mine, and that is for public officials to take a stand. It's as silent now in this room as it was during the time of referendum. None of you took a public stand in support or against this budget. But if you believe in what you do, and if you believed in the mayor's budget, because the budget he put out there and the tax increase he put out there was exactly the same as the Board of Finance, and none of you had the courage to say yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Wendy, please.
Hi, I'm Ms. Frances Sweller. Thank you. Good evening and thank you for all of your service to our town. It's very much appreciated. My name is Wendy Follback. I live at 76 Bonnie E. Lane. I'll hand out some other copies of what I'm discussing because they do, they are number related. You've heard from the Vice Chair of the Board of Education and that there's been signed into legislation $1.5 million. It's been restored to the town of New Milford since the referendum was established. This is fantastic. In light of all that's gone on in this town in the, in the last couple of days, this is very good news for us. We're in a better place and I'd like to take this opportunity to offer some suggestions to see how we can collaborate and see what we do from this point on, because our goal is to come up with something we all can stand behind and pass. And that's where we're at. The legislators recognize the burdens these towns faced. When those mid-year holdbacks were imposed, Bill 5171 was passed into law, preventing the governor from holding back on those funds allowing, allocated to the towns during the fiscal year. While the mayor's budget that was proposed would be preferred, I would like to roll through a scenario if we were to roll back the clock based on where we were at referendum or prior to hearing about these funds. The original Town Council proposed budget included $492,000 from the undesignated fund. We heard from the Town Council concerns about using any more than this amount. We heard you. The public heard you. There is a way to protect the undesignated fund, provide a fiscally responsible budget, and protect the services provided in both the town and education budgets by accounting for $2,544,623 in adjustments. Here's the proposal in the following manner. If you were to keep the Board of Education budget at a 0.08% increase, which is the $968,000 reduction, these steps hold the school budget set by the Board of Finance. You but, budgeting an increase of $1.55,760 in additional state revenue. That is comprised of $1,158,641 from ECS and $417,898 from the pilot grant. If you combine those numbers, a budget with an increase of 3.87% that included using over a million in savings lost by 149 votes, a budget that is a net reduction from last year should be more acceptable to our community now. Restoring the state funds, reducing or eliminating the offset from savings, and offering the voters a zero-to-low-mill increase without any further damage to the funds required to run our schools. A budget with a net reduction from the current year budget should gain support from this community. The Board of Education recognizes the $968,000 task and asks that you hold that line true. Investing the additional 1.9% that comes in from the state solely to the overall needs of the community as you see fit. I firmly believe that after 17 years of public service, that you need to compromise. That number is not an easy number to get to on the Board of Ed, but we do recognize that we need to get a budget that will pass. With $1.5 million of revenue to turn that over to the town and help offset those concerns of savings and undesignedated, I think that we can bring forward a number that, that will work with this community. I do have a brief breakdown if I have a minute left and I'll pass it out. Our 1718 approved budget, the Board of Education, was $62,810,586. The town's $38,204 with a total of $101,474,014. If you were to move that line forward and the Board would accept the 968 adjustment and you took the 1576 total that is being allocated by the state, our overall budget would be $102,071. It is less than last year. Thank you.
Wendy, you have a minute, please?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
We got to hear from the rest of the public. Walter, is there anyone else?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of the question.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the Town Council?
Will those letters be read into the Town Council's office? Will they be available for people to see?
Yes.
Will they be scanned in?
They'll be scanned in.
And there's one more that's being emailed. Do you know it's me?
If you could send, if you could send that in.
I asked them to send it to the Town Council.
Also, too, there are other letters sent to the mayor's office, so they'll also be in the, in the minutes as well. Stephanie, you have those as well?
Have people on the board have anything to see those before making decisions?
Yes. Yes.
Can we have the handout from Ms. Follback?
And Mr. Esposito, you had something you wanted to-
Yeah, I want to, I want to hear from, I want to hear from Finance Director and then I was thinking about maybe recess to talk about some stuff.
Okay. So what would you like to ask?
No, I wanted to elaborate a little bit on what Jeff Winter's was talking about with the, the debt going forward and the money that losing from the town on that debt. And also, the other question he asked you about, how much you're actually really getting from the town voters, if it's not, people are suggesting?
All right. The three categories I've mentioned, the ECS and the two pilot programs, the town column is what we currently budgeted for FY19. The state column is the amount that the legislator, legislature passed, leaving the difference of $1,573,994 to the good, if you will, in those three categories. That's the number.
All right. And then also the continuation of debt for the school, is that going to be going away or is that?
It's going away. However, we've been meeting with the Board of Education to discuss the replacement of roofs and-
Boilers.
Boilers and other capital investments, which will require the town to take that debt on.
Oh, and the oil tanks, too.
And oil tanks, or roofs.
Continuing debt.
You have all sorts of infrastructures that have not been taken care of.
So it's not as though we're not going to put more debt or keep our debt at a, at a certain level. So, you know, say it's going away necessarily. It is in one respect, but I believe we'll be picking it up on the other.
Any other questions for Greg right now?
So, just real quick, so Greg.
Huh?
It's an election year in Hartford.
Right.
I've seen this happen, for the nine years I've been sitting here, almost every time we go to a statewide election, we're going to be almost $2 billion in the hole is the state after this, after this kind of gift back to the communities as they're calling it. Where do we go after that?
Good question.
Do we really think this is going to get-
We could be facing these cuts again in 2020. Also, 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 I have to remind you of this, we have a full revale coming up, for which we have $38,000 put aside from an expected three-quarters, two, three?
Seven hundred.
Three-quarters of a million dollars for the revale.
An exposure for the revale, right? And that's just to get the revale done. That doesn't show the possible reduction in grand list again that could appear in this next revale.
It's possible.
It's very possible.
I'm not speculating.
You can't speculate, but many people have not, their home values have not recovered since the last revale. So with a flat growth grand list and no real prospects for the state of Connecticut to turn this around, we very well could be facing this after next fiscal year. We could get another wonderful gift from the state of another three or possibly one and a half, two or three million dollar reduction. I'm one that has watched this state go down the tubes for the last 30 years. Right? I don't believe that they're going to fix the fiscal house without paying spread out to the entire state. I mean, everybody's going to pay for this, unfortunately. I, I, I think it's wonderful that they came up with this. I don't think it's going to be around much past next November 7th, when these guys all get in and they wind up picking the pockets of everybody. All right? They did it through the kinetic energy efficiency fund, they wiped out money to help homeowners reduce their expenses on, on energy, they wiped out program upon program, and now they're giving us a gift so they can all get reelected. I don't believe it.
Katie?
Greg, what's the, how do you envision that this windfall will be coming to us? What timeframe? If it comes.
Well, the ECS money, I believe, comes three times a year. October, January, and right around June.
So maybe the first payment prior to election is what you're saying, and the other two would be after that. And is there any, anything that you would add to bolster my confidence or other people's confidence that we will receive all that money? I mean, we've seen it taken away before.
I can't recommend it. I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball as to what they're going to do. Alls I can say is, the last two years, they pulled the work out from under the bus.
Right. And we could in effect-
And this year, and this year as well, because we're waiting for the second payment of our Tomadee Roads funds, not sure that, that, that is going to materialize.
Right. So we could in effect spend, as we, every year, know we are probably spending something before we get it, but considering the situation we've seen and where we are, we could in effect say, spend a million that we assume we're going to have and then not end up with it. Do you feel that what we save in our debt service dropping, as Mr. Winters pointed out, do you feel that that would balance that out anyway, considering we have other debt coming along with roofs and gas tanks?
Well, that debt dropping off is already taken into consideration in next year's budget, so.
Right. So it'll be, that debt will be replaced with other debt very soon.
That's the plan anyways, that we're talking about school rules.
That's right. Yes. And improvements that are needed in other schools. I mean, they do need repairs as time goes on. So, okay.
Thank you. Do you guys want, Walter?
There seemed to be a lot of concern from the public about the validity of the election on two states. Perhaps the town attorney could explain that.
So, certainly, Walter, before-
I'm sorry.
Before we do that, Walter, real quick. So there was conjecture of, was this illegal vote? So, the night of the election, I asked the voter registrar, both of them, if they were going to certify this vote. Josh was there with me. So was a number of other people in the audience, they said yes. I then heard from other constituents asking for the validity of it. So I asked the town attorney to opine as to what we can do. Is there anything that, that we can do in a situation like this? So Attorney Grimes, can you?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Sure. So Wednesday morning, after speaking with the registrars and the mayor's office, the registrars actually asked me to look into it because one thing that I asked them about was, was there any concern even with the weather that the referendum could not go on? And they said no, and none of the moderators of any of the seven polling places had raised that. So I consulted title line of the Connecticut General Statutes, which pertains to elections, as well as New Milford's Town Charter. And then I also spoke to the Secretary of the State's office, spoke at length with Mrs. Peggy Reeves. She's a former registrar in Wilton for 20 years. She's currently the Assistant Secretary of the State for Elections, Legislation, and Intergovernmental Affairs. And one of the things that I, I think that, I think the public needs to be aware of is a referendum is not an election, in this sense. A referendum is a adjourned town meeting. Towns with the town meeting, former government decide their budgets at town meetings and decide them at referendums when their charter calls for automatic referendum. So basically, you're taking a question that could be decided in a town meeting assembly here at the high school or at Sarah Noble or wherever, and you're putting it in an all-day referendum. The statutes only require you to hold a referendum from 12 noon to 8:00 p.m. New Milford has consistently done the 14-hour maximum, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So the only way the governor can order a stop in an election midday, cannot all stop a local referendum midday. And then there was no, there was no reason to stop the vote or prevent it from being certified. So therefore, the other thing, too, that Ms. Reeves pointed out, and again, the election had been going on for 10 plus hours, or the referendum had been going on for 10 plus hours at that point. It was not like the storm had hit at 1:00 in the morning the night before and hampered all the roads before the polls opened. Polls had opened at 6:00 o'clock, no glitches were reported throughout the day. Property owners had the opportunity to vote pursuant to 7-6. And fortunately, at 5:00 this hit, but again, the polling places remained open till 8:00 and the vote was certified.
Thank you. Walter, also, there is an emergency plan that the registrars have. New Milford has an emergency plan in place and they did follow that protocol. So the voter registrar, Mr. Grenier, went down to Hill and Plain School. He stayed there until closing. People were able to vote. As unfortunate it is for those that could not make it there, there is no lever to recall or recast a vote.
And I will point out, too, that all of the, I learned, too, from the registrars, all of our tabulators have battery backup when the power goes out. So the votes don't stop getting counted at that point.
If I was just out with them, yes, okay.
Mike, did you have a?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, I'm leaning one way or the other, but the people spoke. People weren't saying the vote was valid, they were just saying that the mandate might not have been there, we think it's, that's, that's all that they were trying to say.
I think there's-
I'm not saying I agree with you, I'm just saying that's what they were trying to point. They weren't saying the vote was valid.
I think there were some, Mike, to, to kind of agree to disagree with you. I think there were some that would, would want a revote, and I think it's just we owe them an explanation as to why there is no ability to do so.
Agreed. Agreed.
Did you entertain a go?
I'd like to take a, make a motion, just take a brief recess, about 10 or 15 minutes.
Do, do I have a second to?
I second.
Is there any discussion on, on a journey for a few minutes?
Doug second?
Sergeant Barnes.
How long did you say?
About 10 or 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Do you want to make it like?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, so we will recess for 10 minutes. Thank you. If I could have everybody's attention, please? If I could have everybody's attention, please?
Everybody, everybody's seat, please.
Sergeant Barnes. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Doug. Like to entertain a motion to reconvene, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Just give me one second.
Okay.
Just give me one second. I need to ask our acting Finance Director a question. I think that somewhere along the line I have a typo. The, the number that went to the referendum on the town side was $38,413,316? I have two different numbers, that's why I'm asking.
That's the worst one.
What? Say it again, Matt.
What was our budget?
Hold it. No, wait, wait, wait. Yes, but I would like to ask Greg, because I believe a typo might have been transposed forward several times. The amount that was in, that people voted on for the town, would you give me that number?
I have here $38,286,674. I was just taking off the middleweight contribution. You're saying it wasn't the same one?
Well, I have some communication from you that has a different number than what I'm asking, but if that's what it was. Then pardon me, but I don't want to perpetuate anything that's in the graphic layer.
Yeah, that, that, those are the right numbers. This is, this is-
That's what I'm asking. No, I'm asking- No, I'm asking.
We want the original vote.
Yes.
The board of, the town council, the town votes.
Yes, yes. I'm going to give it to you now.
Okay.
Got it?
Okay. This is the original town council.
Right.
38,084.
084.
084.
There was the typo.
Okay. Okay.
What is for what?
316 and 62,815,86.
I guess that was the- Thank you.
Original.
That's good. That's what I wanted to know. Okay. So.
This is what currently exists. It's about 154,500.
I have it. Okay. Ready? I'd like to make a motion to recommend a town government budget in the amount of 38,184,316 dollars for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You're adding on the top.
Yes.
Did you say 388,184,000?
It's 184,000, 38,184,316.
Making the motion for this number. Is there any discussion?
That is $100,000 more than the original town council presentation. Does that, everybody understand that? This is not adding or deducting anything from what the Board of Finance put forward. This is adding $100,000 back onto what the town council originally proposed.
Correct.
Which in effect is $100,000 for, it's half of three items that were requested. It's half the amount. It's a compromise in that amount.
So is it being, being a- Is the intention of the 100,000 to be split over the three different ones?
Yes. The intention, the intention behind this is that the amount that was originally asked for, for the VNA, the youth agency, and the water witch, uh, fire people, be just cut in half rather than removed as it was from our original budget. It was added back in by the Board of Finance. So we are now to compromise, we're putting back half. So that's $100,000.
So.
40,000 for the VNA, 35,000 for the youth agency, and 25,000 for the fire department.
Is that less than the number we thought?
That's the-
Yes.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I just forgot to turn.
Um, Greg, did you, did you get where the monies would be going to if approved?
No, I'm kind of slow for a little care.
So there's, the Board of Finance has added three items back in for the fire department, for the VNA, and for the youth agency. That amount we cut in half. What was the fourth?
Uh, women's center for 2,000.
Say again?
The women's center for 2,000.
Oh.
I didn't hear you.
The women's center for 2 grand.
We dealt with these three.
We dealt with these three. So those three, we're getting half of what they requested changed.
We can work the other 2,000 out at some point.
Okay. Walter?
Listen, I'm pointing here. This is from the Board of Finance.
This is the town council budget?
Okay.
And then they add it on to the town council budget?
Okay.
The amount of-
Less than the Board of Finance presented, more than we presented. It's $100,000 more than we originally, but it's less than-
Because we had cut the VNA.
Less than what the voters saw at the referendum.
So the VNA gets half back, the fire department gets half back?
The youth, the youth-
And youth agency gets half back.
Okay.
Is that fully understood, everybody?
Yes.
Does anybody have any discussion on?
There was no second.
Council, yeah.
Yes.
On Councilwoman Francis's motion? Is there a second to her motion?
Tom seconded.
I seconded it.
Correct. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mike, you're opposed? Okay.
Okay.
Next.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion to recommend a Board of Education budget in the amount of, let me not make any more typos here, in the amount of 63,310,586 dollars for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018 and ending June 30th, 2019. No second?
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, yeah, I, um, I just want to go over through, because we keep getting these numbers and there's a lot of numbers that people aren't talking about. From 2010 to 2017, those are numbers that mostly were available. Our grand list has gone up 1.84 percent. The grand list is the amount of taxable property we have in, in town. In that same time period, household income in New Milford, and actually, I only have through 2015, has gone down 8.27 percent. Um, per capita income has gone up a little bit, 1.11 percent. Um, in that same time period, Board of Education expenditures have gone up 10.45 percent and town expenditures have gone up 11 percent. So if your grand list is basically flat and your expenditures are going up at that rate, your mill rate goes up and the mill rate has gone up in that same time period, 9.3, 9.34 percent. So I understand when everyone comes up with individual issues they want to talk about, they want this in the budget, they support that. I understand that, but as a town and as a state, we have to start thinking differently and we cannot continue this trend. If you say, well, it's only a 2 percent increase, but if incomes are down and grand lists are flat, that 2 percent, 2 percent increase makes it a lot harder for people to get by. I know you said you came here and the schools weren't great, now they're better and they'll bring people in. I know people that are complete opposite, that moved here 25 years ago because it was an affordable place to live and are now moving out because they can't afford it. So as a town, going forward, we have to start thinking differently. As someone brought up, the way this community got together for the, um, emergency last, uh, Tuesday night and, and Wednesday and Thursday, that was not paid for by any state agency or any government. It was community members getting together and helping each other and, you know, peeped it, organizing everything, but it didn't take away from our town. It was people donating stuff and donating time and helping their neighbor. We need to get back to that. And I don't know how it works with the Board of Ed to get more volunteers involved in the schools so you can save budgets in that, that respect. I coach track, I don't take an income for it. I coach volunteer because that allows us to hire more coaches and helps the team out better. There's things people can do, and I'm not saying everyone can do everything, but I'm telling you, if you write a check to the town in New Milford for your taxes as opposed to writing a check to a charity that you feel fondly about, you feel a lot better about the charity. So if you're helping something, something in the community and by doing that, it actually allows us to bring our taxes down, it will make us all feel better about ourselves for helping out and helping out that way if you're volunteering. And we have to start thinking that way. We cannot constantly think of the government is who we need to look to, to do things. And so I think going forward, you know, as I said, the state's not in good shape. Do not expect us to get this money next year from the, from the state. We have to think differently. We have to think outside the box. And now, we have a budget, it's, it's a pretty good budget and, and hopefully it's a good compromise, but going over the next year, decade, whatever, we have to get New Milford to be the jewel in the area, the place that people move to because it's inexpensive to live and, and that can help bring in businesses and growth. And, and those are the thoughts that I think you all have to put in your head and start helping each other.
Thank you, Mike. Kate?
Uh, just so this is clear, because we want to be as open and transparent about this, because obviously there are people who will be watching and people who, as this young lady said, who don't pay attention. So this is a compromise in both ways. It's $500,000 back to the education side. I am not 100 percent in line with others who think we will receive all 1.5 million dollars. I just, I'm sorry, I've been burned too many times. If you've lived here long enough, you've seen it and it just gets worse as time goes on. But this is a fair way to do it. We know we'll probably get the first payment before the election, so that means, great, that's 500, we'll have that. We'll see where it goes from there. But I, I want to say thank you to all of you who mentioned the word compromise and who are willing to speak without acrimony and, um, and bring up interesting things such as, uh, voting on a Saturday. Lots of us have thought of that. I mean, you know, lots of towns do it, it's a lot easier. And I want to thank Ms. Fallenback for all the effort she put into coming up with a, a reasonable way to handle it. There's no such thing as a painless cut and so we'll all feel it, but at least we're shared in that and hopefully that's part of our sharing, the way we're in this community together. So, uh, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Esposito?
As part of this, I want to make sure that we are also recognizing the 1.576,539 dollars to be added to the revenue side.
Right.
What we're claiming the state is going to give us, whatever that number is, I want to make sure-
Recognizing that as revenue.
As revenue.
And just say that again, please, Greg? It's 39? 394.
That's split between three categories.
Got it. And?
Let me just-
And can you tell us how that brings us?
The three categories are ECS, I have to pull up the other file, I can't find it, the pilot for colleges and hospitals and the pilot for the state-owned property.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Here we go.
Can you give us-
Okay, so ECS is account number 10470100-43311. Colleges and hospitals are 1041190043601. And state-owned property is 1041190043600.
And Greg, is it asking?
Dollar balance.
No, is it asking too much for you to, well, we, let's vote on this and see where that goes. Could you then tell us what increase or lack of increase we will see from this?
There's no adjustment to fund balance.
Okay.
Right.
You just, you just brought that up.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about the revenue. I don't know what the fund balance differential would be.
Any?
There's no?
If we're, if we're recognizing-
Are you, are you guys using fund balance or no?
Well, that's the number I don't have. That's, that's what we've been reconciled out, maybe we should do that right now before we do this.
Well, right now, with no adjustment, do you want to see what the effect on the mill rate will be?
Yes.
And that would, with no adjustment to fund balance, that would be a 2.6 percent And we'd still be using, I'm not sure what the effect on the, the fund balance would be. If you're looking to book all the 1.5 towards tax reduction, we're still using unsigned fund balance.
Yeah. It should be only about 492, which is what we've been using before.
Okay. So what is it? So you got it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
No. At least we can, we can, we can.
492.
2293, 21, 721, with just one balance or what?
So the 1.5, you're using as revenue?
Yes.
Okay, so Greg? Greg, they're adding the, they're adding the 1.5 and change to revenue?
So.
To revenue. And then what are you using for?
And we're still going to stick with the 492,000.
492,000.
492 for the-
492.
Right.
Taking 492 out of unassigned, not the million five.
Right. 492.
Yep. 492, not all, oh, is that what's in there?
I'm sorry, still.
From unassigned.
I, I believe that's an even, there, yeah, from unassigned, there's just 492,000.
And then what did you say? Probably be, it should be the same, it should be 3.8.
It should stay.
You're rich. 720,000, unassigned fund balance on top of 492, trying to reconcile.
So they're getting rid of-
What you did, how does this change the, um, the Board of Finance's numbers? That's, that's the way I was going to back into it. See, if we can, if we delete this, we'll delete this. Include that number. So if you delete this-
Is that it?
Right?
Hmm? Is that it? That's the number that it's going to be.
Okay. Close back. We should all have to do this. So we can embed it in there. Okay, so you're saying, I can't verify this right now, but you're still saying that you're using the original 492.
From unassigned.
From unassigned.
From unassigned and that's embedded in these numbers. I have to vet that, to be honest with you.
Okay, what does that, what does that mean?
Right. What does that mean to our, to our time for the rest of the evening?
Do you intend to, that's what you mean?
Greg, do you need for us to take a couple of minutes while you?
Yeah, yeah. Give us a quick-
Uh, move to recess for 10 minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Get your money's worth tonight.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, please? Do I have a, do I have a motion to reconvene?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Greg?
Okay. So, 492, 724,000 will be used out of surplus with this budget. And as a result of your actions, adding 500,000 to the Board of Ed, 100,000 to the town and recognizing the 1.5 million in revenue, the increase to the mill rate is 2.6 percent.
And Greg, how does that compare to what it was when it went to referendum?
Well, it's 3.87.
So it's less?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does everybody hear that?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little more than 1 percent. So we have a motion and a second. Right, we have a second on the motion?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we're-
I seconded it.
Tom had seconded it.
Yes.[1793.83]
Any other discussion on the, Doug?
Yes, I just want to mention, you know, I thank everybody for tonight, and obviously, you know, some of the, the members here, this is the first time, go around, and we all live here, we all know people, for the BOE, the BOF, teachers, people that work in municipal side, we all have children, some still in the school system, and these are difficult decisions, and then, and trust me, this is my first go-around, and I've asked a lot of questions in the last couple of weeks, because knowledge helps. I reach out to people, and I understand that we need to cut, and I understand that we need to compromise. And, uh, so I wanted to thank everybody tonight, and especially the commission members, who have bounced off a lot of ideas, a lot of us had a difference of opinion walking in here tonight, and because of this new surplus that the state has given us, and some compromise, and some proposed things, you know, we changed our minds, and we want to compromise. So I just want to thank everybody from the public, you know, social media and stuff like that, we're very passionate, and there's no doubt. But we are one town in Millford, and we have to move forward, and we all have to, you know, come together. So I want to thank everybody on the council, and everybody in the public who is here, or whoever's out on here, and whoever's, uh, will be reading this, thank you very much.
Mr. Esposito?
I want to refer with my colleague, this is the ninth budget season for me, and we've had nine years of a roller coaster ride, and it came to the economy in this, in this, in the country, and the economy of the state, and our local economy. We were lucky enough in the last recession to not get wiped out like many towns around us, because we had a great savings account, because we did, we were proactive economic development-wise, a lot of, a lot of businesses didn't leave at the same rate as other communities. But I've also seen in nine years, a lot of fights, and unfortunately, some scare tactics, you know, and the easiest people to scare are parents, let's face it, right? I have two little kids, many of us in this room have kids, it's very easy to throw around, ooh, this is coming down on your kids. All I'm going to say is, the Board of Ed's going to have 63 million, five, 310,000 dollars, hopefully going forward. If you can't find in that budget some way to reduce these numbers a little bit without impacting students, we all know you can, everybody knows you can. Let's not blame others for hurting our kids, let's take the money that we have, and make it work without impacting the kids. Maybe some higher-ups have, heads have to roll, but not paras that help these kids on a daily basis, maybe people that make six figures could lose a couple of jobs. You know, at 18,000 dollars a year for a para, you can keep a lot of paras in place with a couple of vice this, or chairmen of that's, getting cut out of these budgets. You don't have to impact the kids, you really don't. And let's stop going forward, using this scare tactic about hurting our children, it's just not good for a small community like this. We don't live in a big city where we can insulate ourselves, we all see each other on the town green, we see each other at the parades, so I, I'm also saying, I, I am very skeptical about getting this money, and I'm, and I'm, and it's making me have a difficult time adding this money back in, because I, I see differently, as a finance guy that, that helped put people into this community for many years, we have a 78,000-dollar household in, average household income in this town, that's the median. There are reports that have come out across our country, we've got almost 41% of the people that really can't afford their lifestyle, they're on some sort of aid across this country, this town, if you go to social services, things are exploding over there, we go across all the communities, go to the food banks, go to, go to the local places of worship, where we're taking care of other, other folks. We don't have big incomes in this town. So I'm hoping that the Board of Ed and the town, over these next six to eight months, can start thinking about saving next year, because in the event that October rolls around, or November, or whenever we get this money from the state, and some of it doesn't show up, we, we got to be ready to fill that hole in, like we were doing this year, with cooperation between the town side and the Board of Ed, you know? I think a little bit more collectiveness here, a little more careful on, on preserving the town, so that we can keep the people that love to live here, here, and attract other families to come here, like I was attracted back here with my family, 13, almost 14 years, 15, my daughter's 15, and she, we moved back here when she was three months old, all those people, all right, yes, I'm an old guy. But let's, please, let's just try to come together on this, move this budget forward, and find ways to continue to save money, non-stop, going forward, like we do in our own homes, on a daily basis. So I want to thank everybody for the hard work, the Board of Ed, you guys have a very difficult job, the Board of Finance, the town council, every board and commission in town, as well as the mayor. This is tough, this is very tough, some of us have lost, lost friends over this, over the years, it shouldn't have to be like this. So I'm, I'm supporting this budget going forward, but please try to save anywhere you can, so that we don't, I think next year after this, this holiday they're going to give us, it's not going to happen again, we all know we're going to hit with about a $3 million cut the next time, so be prepared for that, please, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Someone anecdotal, a man on the street approached me, and he said, hey, I voted no for the education budget, and I didn't know what to say to him, and he said, you know why? And I said, why? Because I want to see more money in the education budget. The Shen Lady tonight used the word first, compromise, you know, that's the stuff of democracy now, I'm the only Democrat sitting here right now. I like compromise, I'll take the 500,000, let's put it into the board.
Thank you, Walter.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Walter. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I grab stool hands? And eliminate that, huh?
Okay, I have another motion, next motion? Motion to hold the second budget referendum on Tuesday, June the 5th, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM pursuant to Town Charter Section 707, with the following questions to be voted on pursuant to action of the town council on May 21st, 2018. Question one, A, question one, shall the sum of 38,000, 38 million, 184,000, 316 dollars be appropriated as the annual town government budget for 2018-19 fiscal year? The answer to that would be yes or no. Item B, question two, shall the sum of 63 million, 310,000, 586 dollars be appropriated as the annual Board of Education budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year? The answer to that would be yes or no. Non-binding advisory questions, the response to these questions is voluntary. Item C, question three, if the budget is defeated, do you wish to see the amount of 38 million, 184,000, 316 dollars for general town government increased? The answer would be yes or no. Item D, question four, if the budget is defeated, do you wish to see the amount of 63 million, 310,000, 586 dollars for education increased? And the answer would be yes or no. That completes the motion. Pardon?
June 5th is the referendum? Is that the right date?
Yes, June 5th.
Thank you.
Wait a second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
It's June 5th, Saturday?
Tuesday.
A Tuesday.
If the council members could come to my office when the meeting adjourns to sign the referendum resolution, I'd appreciate it.
And right before we adjourn, Walter, before you say that, I would like first to thank the public that came tonight, that spoke to the town council, and also sent in their comments to the town council, because that's what makes this community the way that it is. I'd also like to thank all of the people that it came out to vote, the ones that will come out to vote on June 5th. I'd like to thank all of the, all of the members in, the directors that are sitting here, and also our Board of Finance members, and our Board of Education partners, all working in tandem with our town employees to bring the budget, this next budget, to the people, to let the people decide. So as we can see, our government works, so I'd like to thank everyone again, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thank you.